Good evening, everyone. Good evening and thanks for coming. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, September 24th, 2018, to order and recognize that we have two items on tonight's agenda. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one tonight is approval of the minutes from the Licensing Board Regular Meeting held on September 10th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is approval of operators licenses, and that list is in our packets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And be no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn.
I'd like to call the Finance Committee to order for September 24th. Note that there are five items on the agenda. The first is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from September 10th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions, changes? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number two, approval for parks purchase, parks vehicle purchase, and a presentation from Mike Ench.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. The department requests to purchase one one-ton pickup truck from Luckin Ford of Newburgh for $41,596. The department sent a request for quotes to six local vendors and received only the one. The budget amount for this potential purchase was $45,000. This truck will be replacing a 1990 minivan. That minivan, we would then sell at auction. Estimated value, my guess is $300. Rear wheel drive, little minivan with a stop sign for a floor. There's not much left of the machine, so... This truck will be utilized for general property maintenance, special events, forestry operations, athletic fields. It's a 12-month-a-year vehicle, snowplow up front, things like that. Just a standard one-ton pickup truck with a snowplow and a liftgate in the rear. Thank you.
Any questions for Mike?
Mike, does this have a boom on it?
No, this is a standard pickup truck, John. Thank you. That's a great question, though. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number three is resolution for urban forestry grant. And I guess I get to read this, huh?
Good evening. The department's requesting approval of a resolution to apply for $25,000 for an urban forestry grant. This is the same grant we applied for and were awarded last year. It's used for the street tree program, and the capital budget includes money that would match that grant, 25 percent or 50 percent match grant. It's the same thing we got last year, so... We're requesting approval of that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So you need to save me a lot of reading.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Item number four, decision regarding claim against the city by Aegis Corporation, Elizabeth Hackbarth. And I take it this is our standard insurance claims that people have to file with us before they go for their insurance?
Yes.
Any... Anybody have any questions on the item?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion to deny and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. Item number five, decision regarding a claim against the city by Aegis Corporation, John Mastapich. And this is probably the same thing?
Same thing, yes.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the claim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries. With that, I adjourn the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Steve. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, September 24th, 2018, to order and recognize that we have 20 items on tonight's agenda, starting off with approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 10th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 200, presentations, is a presentation from some folks from the Westminster Place Subdivision on the 18th Avenue Special Assessment. I've been contacted by a few of those folks. I'm guessing that's lots of you guys out in the crowd. I was told there's a handful that would like to speak tonight. If you'd like to come on up to the mic, let us know your name and your address. Let us know what's on your minds. Good evening.
All right, I'm Steve Alice. I live at 856 Abbey Road. Do you want us to all introduce ourselves before we start?
Nope. If you'd like to let us know what's on your mind in the next... People can come on up.
Will do. All right, well, first off, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to allow us to speak in regards to the 18th Avenue General Improvement. So we're here tonight to ask you to reconsider the decision you made on May 7th to move forward with the general... To move forward with the local assessment and assessing not only our subdivision but also all of those along 18th Avenue. 15 years ago, our subdivision was a farm field. That farm field paid taxes based on agriculture. Those taxes were part of that same tax that we've paid since our subdivision has come together. As an example, the average property in our subdivision last year paid $3,000 to the City of West Bend in city taxes. Of that $3,000, 10 percent of it, or about $300, went to the Department of Public Works and Engineering. Carry that out over the average life or the average property in our subdivisions, about 10 years, our subdivision's paid $3,000 to the Department of Public Works and Engineering over that 10 years. So had our subdivision up and built, the question is whether or not 18th Avenue would still need its upgrade. The answer to that is a sounding yes. Those answers can be found in the grant request that the city made to the state to allow for federal funds to pay for 80 percent of the project. The average car count in 2012 on that stretch of road was just under 9,600 cars. Today, I'm guessing it's over 10,000 cars a day. The road's classified as a minor arterial roadway. It's one of two minor arterial roadways within the city that doesn't have a curve. The other one's County Road G. That's why the traffic pattern is such that there are darn near 10,000 cars a day. Lastly, 18th Avenue allows travel between the north and south business districts of West Bend. So you've got within that... Within the grant request, it specifically calls out Walmart, Home Depot, Menards, West Bend Mutual, West Bend Clinic, Fleet Farms, Sendix Pick and Save and Walgreens. In closing, in my part, the grant request also spells out one more thing, and that's that transportation construction projects utilizing federal funds except sidewalks are likely general improvements that primarily benefit the public at large for which special assessments cannot be levied under State Statute 66.0703. Again, we're here tonight to ask you to reconsider the decision to locally assess our subdivision. I'm going to turn it over now to Harry Shaw.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to speak tonight. This is an important issue. I guess I'm only allowed about two minutes, and I barely can introduce myself in two I'm coming at it from a little different direction than the numbers and the legislation. I want to tell you a little bit of a story. It's a true story. It's about my maternal grandparents, Getano and Rosalie Piscatello, who immigrated to this country after the First World War. They worked hard. They first came in New York, moved to eastern Pennsylvania. Getano worked hard. Rosalie had a lot of babies. Family grew to nine in a fairly quick period of time. But my grandfather wanted to have a business of his own, and he saved his money and he opened a little Italian grocery store, a neighborhood store, not a supermarket. And he was really excited, and the first day he was in business. And this is a true story. Two gentlemen in suits, nice fedoras, came in and wished them the best of luck. "By the way, could you do me a little favor?" My grandfather knew who they were. It was called La Costa Nostra back then. Later became the mafia. They asked him if he'd be the numbers runner for the neighborhood. And the numbers, I don't know if you know what they are, but it's like the lottery today, except the government didn't get a cut, went to the mob. And he had a family look after, and he said, "Yeah, okay, we'll do that." And my mother, who was pretty quick with numbers, became his bookkeeper. So it's a family story that goes back, but it reminds me what's happening today. We're being settled with a tax liability that was brought about because a developer wanted to develop some land and was given the opportunity to develop the land if they assumed the responsibility for putting in Highway 18. And I call it Highway 18 because, as Steve alluded, there's a lot of traffic that goes by. It's a general usage road. It doesn't benefit our neighborhood. It benefits the city. Now, I was informed before I bought my lot that there would be an assessment. I did the stupid thing. I assumed that it would be for the sidewalk, because I'm a little bit familiar with how the cities operate. My dad was an alderman for years in Beaver Dam, and then Wes Salem, became a city administrator. By the way, I don't envy your jobs. You're never right. Somebody always thinks you're wrong. So thank you for doing what we should all do. But I thought, yes, sidewalk, no problem. So I walked into it, and I was blindsided when I found out that you folks were talking about an assessment for the whole road. An assessment that struck me as being not only unusual, but against State Statute. And I know your whole argument lays on this agreement that was signed by the developers. And that's why my story, I think, is relevant, because the developers had a choice. They could develop the property, make a buck in the process, or they could walk away, because the city was asking them to assume a liability they shouldn't have asked to assume. My understanding is they were given three options. One, put a couple hundred grand aside in escrow, which they would get back after a certain period of time, and I think it was eight or 10 years. Two, tax the people who are abetting right up to 18th, and that would have been atrocious. Or spread it out over the whole subdivision or neighborhood. And if you're being forced to do something, at least they did the honorable thing and put it over 60 homes rather than eight. But had they put it into escrow, again, this is my understanding, those monies would have come back to them in eight to 10 years, and we wouldn't be here tonight, because you would no longer have a grounds to assess us. So I'm just asking for each of you to consider what you would feel like if you were in this position, if you think that was equitable when it was done, when it was done, and if the people in this city in the future had this sort of thing to look forward to, because I think it was a low blow, and I think it should be rescinded. And I thank you for your time. I've probably gone over my two minutes. So you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening. I'm Todd Hammer. I live at 851 Abbey Road with my wife. I've been a West Bend resident and a property owner for over 40 years. I'm here to ask you to reconsider and reverse your decision from May regarding the special assessments. I speak for myself and for the property owners at Westminster. It could be argued that this special assessment is unfair and maybe even discriminatory. To my knowledge, no other subdivision has faced an assessment like this. To my knowledge, in the last dozen years, street improvements have been done, and no special assessments have been made. That goes for the 8th Avenue improvement this summer, same for the Evergreen Street Improvement last summer, same for the improvement of 18th Avenue between Chestnut and Decorum. Now, much has been made of the development agreement. I would like to draw your attention to two pertinent parts of that development, and I know you probably don't have the development agreement in front of you. Page eight, section three, paragraph eight, talks about the preservation of assessment rights. I won't read the whole thing. I'll just read you the pertinent language. "The city shall have the right to impose special assessments." Doesn't say that the city must impose special assessments. Doesn't say that the city has to impose special assessments. The agreement retains your rights to do so. Second pertinent section is found on page 13. Section six, paragraph G. Again, the pertinent verbiage. "The city intends to reconstruct 18th Avenue and may..." Let me stress that. "...and may levy special assessments." The city may also not levy special assessments. Nothing in this paragraph, there's nothing in this document that says you have to levy a special assessment. In fact, the right thing to do is to reverse your decision in May and not levy the special assessment. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks to the rest of the neighborhood for your candor and demeanor tonight. Sometimes we get some folks that are extra wound up, and I know this is a passionate topic for all of you, but thank you very much for listening to your neighbors, as we also did. Anybody have questions? Tonight may or may not be the time. Ian, could you let us know what the process is? Will these folks be, again, once the project is completed, we know final costs, exactly what happens from here on out?
Yep. So the current status is the preliminary resolution to assess the special assessments has been adopted. There was a public hearing with that. After all of the numbers are in, Max will bring the final resolution, which has the exact numbers from the DOT. I've talked to Max. I'm not sure when that's going to come through. It's not a city project. It's not run by the city directly, so there are... You know, we don't control when the final numbers come in the way we would with other construction projects. There will be another point at that... Or another time at that point that you will vote on the final resolution, and that will have the exact amounts of all of the assessments, and it will also... Max will then be there explaining what exactly is being assessed for as far as the... Specifically, the street widening. It's not the existing roadway. It's the widening of the roadway, but not all of the widening of the roadway, because a portion of that is outside of bringing it to standard urban width. And he can also go through the other, you know, storm sewer, sidewalk, curb and gutter, et cetera, and how he calculated what the assessments are based on the development agreement and such.
Is that another public hearing, or no?
It's a public meeting. It's not a public hearing, so there's no public hearing requirement where we have to open the public hearing, but it is a public meeting and...
Will these folks be noticed? I'm sure they'll be paying attention, but is there a... We've done it in the past. I don't know if it was that council or at the plan commission, in some circumstances like this, where there's been a lot of passion behind a topic. And Mark, I think you recall this, and Jim, we can publicly notice these folks, even if it's not a public hearing. It seems prudent to me that if they're potentially financially obligated for something, the least we could do is give them a heads up to make sure that they have time to make arrangements to get to the meeting. So if we could, let's make a note whenever that's going to be. I think the road's opening up sometime early October. It'll probably be a couple of months after that, I would think, before we have final invoices in, so it's probably first of the year-ish.
Yep. I don't know that it's a specifically a legal requirement that we notice, provide notice with the public hearing, but we can make sure.
Unless the council disagrees, I'd like to make sure these people get a fair heads up and a chance to think about it and comment if they'd like to. That works for you guys. If we can pass it along, I don't see the engineering folks here, but if...
We'll make sure.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments from the council at this point? Thanks again, everybody. Conversation's not done. Thanks for coming out, and you'll get a notice when the project gets wrapped up. Actually, you'll probably know before we do. When the project gets wrapped up, you'll be driving on it, but from a financial perspective, you'll get a notice to make sure the meeting is in your calendars.
You're already driving on it.
Yep. You see, and take it up and move the barriers. I just put the barrier back.
Thank you. Steve, why don't you jump up to the mic? I'm sure your kids are watching. They want to see you on TV.
Probably not. So our ask was to have you guys reconsider. Will there be a step in the process where you reconsider the decision that you made on May 7th?
My gut tells me that the council, probably individually, if not collectively, will be talking to staff. It seems like we want to get educated more on it, and please understand, this isn't passing the buck, but nobody sitting up here was on the council. We didn't have the same city attorney, clerk, administrator when this was put into place. So I think little by little, we're getting up to speed on, as Dr. Hammer said, some comparable projects or not comparable projects, and exactly where this stands. So it isn't part of the process as it stands right now, but it can be if we choose to do that.
Okay. I think specifically the 8th Avenue project this summer is one that comes to mind. That road was widened. The conversation that Ian made was they were paying for the widening of the road. There was no assessment to widen 8th Avenue. I'd just also ask that then the city lets us know, once the common council has made a decision, whether or not they're going to reconsider or not?
My guess is that it'll all be done at whatever the timeframe that this...
In January?
And I don't hold me to January. That's my guess, knowing the speed of things. It'll be sometime late fourth quarter, early first quarter, that the project will get wrapped up, and this would be about... I doubt that we'll bring it forward until we have all the numbers, and once we have all the numbers, we'd have been bringing it forward anyway at that point.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Anybody from the council? Okay.
The mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just from my perspective, I think it's going to be important to see some of these final numbers. I'm very interested in learning more about the difference between just the sidewalk construction, as what percentage of that there is as far as the total project is concerned. So like the mayor had said, I think there's a little bit of education that's going to go on here in the next couple of months for all of us, and, you know, again, reiterating what the mayor said again, you know, we weren't there when this whole thing went on, so we don't know the real nuance of it all. However, we do understand that things change, times change, and other things have gone on in that time, so we'll definitely take this very carefully and in consideration. So just so you have that peace of mind from my perspective.
You guys are welcome to stay. It's very exciting stuff. Moving ahead to item number... That was the invitation. Moving ahead to item number three is a public hearing regarding levying special assessments for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. Do we have a presentation tonight? Adam, is that you?
I am happy to.
I wouldn't mind during the public hearing portion here, I don't know if anyone else is going to speak, but we'd like... I know there's been some discussion back and forth, but like to understand where we're at.
Okay. The... We met on the operating plan in September, and it was brought forth to be brought in front of the common council for your approval. There were a few adjustments on there, and what you have in front of you is what was suggested.
So this word, the public hearing is, and then the next action item is purely regarding the assessment, not necessarily the budget. Does the council take action approving their budget?
Yes, it would.
And that is the resolution? That's the next agenda item?
The entire operating plan.
Okay. Then, item number three, since it's a public hearing, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the item? If so, feel free to step up to the mic. Just let us know your name and address, and we'll go from there.
There's some things when it comes to the bid operating plan that we think that shouldn't move forward and go back to the bid for further review. In the last few years, they've had $27,000 in their marketing budget to market the downtown, and this year, there is nothing. And we feel like it's an injustice to the taxpayers downtown that you're not marketing the downtown. They're spending, next year, their budget over $17,000 in landscaping, and the downtown's going to look beautiful, but then we want to let people come to the downtown, invite them to come. And we also think that there needs to be term limits on the president. The current language on the operating plan is very vague, like, just like the president has term limits. Our mayor has term limits. It should also be with the bid.
Thank you. Actually, the mayor doesn't have term limits. It might be a good idea if we do someday, but... Okay. Thanks.
Jeanie Renick, 1242 Park Avenue. The only thing I'd like to add with regards to the budget for the bid is that one of their main five goals is to design, develop, and implement marketing programs and strategies that promote the image of the downtown areas as prosperous and unified, and which specifically work towards minimizing the downtown business vacancy rate, as well as promoting a proper retail mix for the commercial business district. And we feel if this is one of their five main goals, that there should be a line item in their budget for marketing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the item? Or is it entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is a resolution levying special assessments for the 2019 downtown West Bend Business Improvement District. Ian, you had something you wanted to mention.
Yep. So the... And Anna mentioned this. Essentially, by approving this, you're adopting the operating plan and budget that had been approved by the bid board. The council does not control the budget in any way, shape, or form. Like, you can't change the budget at all. The remedy, and the only thing you really can do, is reject the resolution. If you deny the resolution, it gets sent back to the bid board to make amendments, and then they can present it back to you. But it's just a purely a... You consent and adopt the budget. You have no actual ability to tweak the numbers or change what they're spending the money on or anything like that. And I would also note that the bylaws were adopted by the bid. We did just amend them a year ago? Right when... Was that a year ago? I think it was almost exactly a year ago, wasn't it?
February 6th, 2018.
Okay. So it was within the last year that we went over everything and kind of tweaked the bylaws, and they were adopted by the bid board at that time, so...
Any questions or comments?
Just so I can get some clarification, maybe, Adam, you can answer a little bit more, too. So the bid board is obviously made up of people who are invested in the downtown businesses. So what we're seeing presented to us tonight, was this unanimously approved? Was there a time and place that these individuals could have, you know, expressed these points of conflict before it now coming to us? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, it was also a public hearing during the bid board. Proper notice was given. Also, two members of the bid board were not present, but outside of that, it was unanimously approved.
Okay. Thanks. John?
Yeah. Since the marketing was taken out, is it placed anywhere in the project where some of the marketing... Or the marketing that was taking out the $17,000 or $20,000? of the marketing, or the marketing that was taking out the 17,000 or 20,000, is that somewhere in one of the other items on the project list?
Correct. It was placed into implementation of downtown recommendations. That is your 17,000. And then also, slightly more was given to put in the landscaping section, and there is now a new Riverwalk West donation. So there's been a lot of adjustments. Our fund for future projects has then gone up by, I believe, $9,000. And the conversation that was had at the bid board meeting is, this allows a vague language to, then if marketing dollars are requested by different groups, that it can fall under that category.
I think that's been one of the large changes in the bid the last couple of years. They paid for, they are paying over time, the removal of the old pedestrian bridge, not to flashback in time, but I think that's $4,900 a year in that budget for the next four or five years, something like that. And I should remember this, but I don't exactly, $50,000 for the east side of the river, I believe.
Yeah.
And then $35,000 so far for the future west side. So these dollars aren't vanishing. Arguably, that could be marketing. I fully understand, you know, the position of some of their downtown merchants, but there's probably a lot of ways to define marketing. My understanding is, I talked with Jay a little bit, I don't know if any of you reached out and talked with Jay. It sounded to me as though the bid board was looking for some specific, a marketing recommendation, I guess I'll call it. And maybe in the past, there's just been a line item called marketing. Now they'd like to be able to address and vet out any specific marketing efforts, and then make a decision if they're worthy of investment. Did I say that correctly?
Yes. That's.
Okay. Mike?
Adam, can you explain a little bit about where the marketing dollars have gone in the past?
Absolutely. In the past, the Diva Group has come and requested them. And then this last year, the Downtown Association, along with the Diva Group and a few other invested members, had gotten together and came up with a plan for exactly how they would be, what they were requesting those dollars for. Prior to that, I'm not 100% sure exactly where they had gone, hadn't gone back that far.
But as far as you know, has, go ahead.
They've been around a little longer than I have.
That's true.
Requesting those dollars.
Feel free to come up, let us know what's on your mind.
So I believe three years ago, there was about $6,000 given, and the majority of that was done for the bid in general. 2,000 or 3,000 went to the Diva Group to market some of their events, but the rest was done on TMJ4, on the Morning Blend, through commercials, I mean, through presentations on that show to bring people to West Bend. Then the next year, we ran commercials for West Bend. That was about, we got 11,500, and of that, I think 8,500 was general bid marketing, and 2,000 or 3,000 was Diva marketing. And this past year, we got around 9,600, and of that, 2,000 was for Diva marketing. 2,000 went to the Downtown Association for their general marketing of the rat cards and different things, and the rest was all towards general marketing of the Downtown Association, or the downtown in general, that bid area.
Adam, has the bid of that percentage, do they use marketing dollars for anything other than events, the bid themselves? Or do they typically take marketing dollars and grant them to other entities?
The bid typically grants them to other entities, just for, but going forward, they're joining the Washington County Visitors Bureau, things like that. I can't actually think of any other example, and that's a very minor amount, but otherwise other entities have done it.
Do you know if the Chamber of Commerce has ever received any money from the bid for marketing of the downtown area?
No, they, no, I haven't seen that.
Okay.
That's not to say I wouldn't be wrong.
Sure. But as far as you know. And then, I guess, the final question that I have is, the marketing dollars that typically were available, and maybe you hit on this a little bit, John, are still somewhere in the budget, they're just not earmarked specifically for marketing, and therefore, also not specifically earmarked for events, promotions, or expenses that go along with events. They're just there under different categories for whatever marketing is needed for the bid district.
Absolutely. This is set up so that if individuals want to come forward with a marketing plans, or just a request in general, they can come to the bid board meetings and request those dollars.
Great. Thank you.
They handle you, Steve?
No, I pretty much covered. I just wanted to make sure that the money was still there, and if they applied for it, and came up with a marketing budget or program, that it would still be available.
Sounds to me similar to how we're changing the tourism, or the new tourism committee is set up pretty similarly, that instead of carte blanche, doing what we've always done, folks can come forward, make a request. If it's a great idea, they may get some dollars. If it's, if it's a great idea, sometimes they may not. But that the dollars are still there, can be used for marketing, it just hasn't been done as the same way they did in the past. Chris?
Just so I can get some more clarification. So how's, how was the process if somebody had an idea and they wanted to use marketing funds? How was that presented versus how it's going to be now?
Well, it seems like the adjustment might come where the 27,000 that was discussed in the past, or that we talked about from the past, they would allocate that large chunk of money right away in the beginning, and say, this group gets this piece of it, this group gets this piece, or somebody gets all of it. Where here, you don't know what percentage is going to go where at any given time, and it can be more of, just lack of a better term, organic as far as where it's going to go.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think it's important for us to remember, this may be what you were alluding to, Ian, is that these dollars specifically are bid district dollars. So the folks watching at home, this is a line drawn around the downtown. These aren't, they're public monies, but they're not greater West Bend money. So really, the city's kind of a facilitator of the bid board. Ladies, you're certainly welcome to apply for the bid board if you like. I don't think we've ever, I think every application I've had, that person ultimately was on the board eventually. There might be one or two people, but welcome to get on the board. If you'd like to change how the marketing budgets are done, if you'd like to change the bylaws and put a presidential term limit on it, feel free. But we're really not here to approve their budget. That's their job to do. We're, I guess, allowing the action to happen, but that's about. Yeah. Anybody else? Thanks for coming out, ladies, appreciate it. Then I would entertain a motion to, motion regarding the resolution leveling special assessments for the 2019 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any final questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items number five through seven are the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight is approve mayoral appointment of Michael Weston to the Park and Recreation Commission. I believe we had some information on, Mike, in our packets. He's here tonight, if anyone wants to ask him any questions, but a longtime community servant here in West Bend, we'd love to have him on the Park and Rec Commission. Just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Congrats, and thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. Item number nine is an introduction of the Milwaukee Bucks West Bend Court Project, and we have a presentation tonight by Park Rec and Forestry Director Craig Hepner. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. We have a very exciting project that we want to discuss briefly, and certainly answer any questions. The Milwaukee Bucks, you may have heard of them, and the West Bend Mutual Insurance Company, you may have heard that company in the town, have come together to do a very generous gift to the city. And what they're looking at doing is working with the city, Park Rec Department, and also the Boys and Girls Club. Jay Fisher and Ryan Rohlinger are here in the audience as well. So four partners involved in this, and it would be developing, we're calling it a sports complex. It's a basketball court, volleyball court, with also potential for pickleball on one of the courts, and double volleyball courts. It'd be mainly used by the Boys and Girls Club and West Bend Recreation Division for programming, but certainly open to the public when it's not being used by either entity. It would be placed in a location, we call it A Diamond, it's the softball diamond, kind of in the left field area of the hardball diamond, along the parking lot, just across from the fish pond. So A Diamond would actually go away as a softball diamond. We currently use that for lots of youth practices, some of our rec division programs and Boys and Girls Club programming, and a church softball league uses that field for a couple hours a week. So working with those partners to find different locations. B Diamond certainly is used heavily by the Church Softball League and our programs and Boys and Girls Club, which will continue. But this would be a great addition to the park. What you have before you, I believe, is a drawing which shows kind of the court, shows a basketball court. It would be set up almost regulation size, a little bit smaller. There would actually be six basketball hoops, two for the main court, and then four on the sides. That basketball court could also be used as a volleyball court. Then separately from it would be another, strictly a volleyball court, with also line for pickleball. Again, focus is not for adults necessarily, although they could play here for basketball or volleyball, but really focused on kids. You also have a term sheet that was signed by the Milwaukee Bucks president. There's two changes to it that I want to bring up to you from what you have in your packet. The first one's pretty minor, but it shows, it's in the first paragraph, and it says the new change is that sports complex will be used primarily by the Boys and Girls Club of West Bend and the West Bend Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. When not in use by either of those entities, then it'll be used by the general public. And Jay and myself are actually meeting this week to talk more about how that gets used, but from a city point of view, we're very flexible on this. We want to see it get used heavily. The other one that's important to us was number six. In your packet, I think number six says anything, any cost overruns beyond the gift would be the responsibility of the city. We didn't think that was appropriate, so the Bucks have graciously accepted any cost overruns to cover that. So that's been agreed to by them. I don't think there's been any other changes to what you have before you. There's probably plenty more to talk about. Actually, let me just give you a quick timing. If the council would approve this agreement tonight, they are ready to go with construction in the month of October yet this year, and get it all done by the end of October, probably. They have vendors lined up, they would actually take care of removing the fencing that is there, the field, or doing some excavation, and then laying down, they basically lay down a concrete pad, and then it's, I'll call it sport court, but they call it snap court. It's a more flexible material that goes on top of it, it can be used outdoors, just like indoors. There's two layers of it, and that's what the surface will be for that. And then they would construct all the components, volleyball standards, basketball hoops, all that. There's the picture of the logos, the four logos that would go on to the court as well. So that's kind of a really quick run-through. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any questions for Jay or Ryan, they're here as well.
Ian?
Just a note, it's not on for approval tonight, it's an introduction item. We didn't know if we would have the final term sheet, the amended one, in time, so it was put on as an introduction. The actual approval will be on next meeting, next week.
In the next meeting, it's next Monday, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ian. Any questions? Mike?
Craig, it does indicate that the West Bend or the Bucks will not be responsible for contributing or funding the operations and maintenance of the project. This being a little bit of a unique style court, is there any specific maintenance that you've discovered that may be over and above standard maintenance for any other basketball hoop, or court, or tennis courts that we already have?
Right. Great question. Yes, we would be responsible for future maintenance of it. I see it as a lot less maintenance than maintaining a softball diamond, actually, just because they're out there dragging that and maintaining lines and all that. Yes, there's a possibility of, they're basically tiles that get placed in. They've been out there now for 20 or 25 years, so it's definitely held up. I believe there's a 16-year warranty on this, so you could pop a tile or something kind of like you're carpeting here. But for the most part, they've really stood the test of time now. So the basketball components, they're putting in some really nice basketball backboards and hoops, and breakable rim, breakaway rims. So it's all pretty heavy-duty things. We're always worried about vandalism. They also do, they're adjustable. You can crank the rims down to a lower level, but that wouldn't be for the public, that would be only for kids' programming. So I see it actually as really sturdy. There'll be some fencing behind the volleyball court, some netting, but overall, I think it'd be a lot less than maintaining a softball diamond.
Does the court itself actually come up in the winter, then, and is stored somewhere? Or does it stay out right?
No, it actually, it would actually stay there. So there's, it's, it kind of looks like mesh, I mean, it's much more sturdy than that, but the water and snow and everything drains through it, and they set up drainage to get outside of it. So it would stay in place year-round.
Thank you.
Like the location, I know it, some people hate to see the softball diamond go, but from a vandalism standpoint, it's a pretty visible spot, pretty easy for our police and other folks monitoring to get to. And regarding Cusfield, I think this, it'll end up being positioned that regardless of how the baseball diamond may get tweaked here in the next year, that this is still well out of the way of any of that.
Yes, we've, we're actually out there measuring again today just to make sure, but there's plenty of space between even expanding, pushed-out outfield fence into this area. We also are working at Barton Park to upgrade that softball diamond. We have had one for many, many years. It used to be an adult softball haven, and so that'll be another opportunity, probably a better opportunity for kids' practices and those kind of things, for people that were playing at Diamond A.
John?
I just want to comment, as far as, I think that's a great idea, putting this in there. If you leave the softball diamond there, if they practice, balls may end up going over into the hardball diamond while they're playing, and I'm sure the ball players aren't real happy with that. I know I've been involved in that a long time ago. So you're utilizing an area that pretty much is going to be dead. Now it's going to be viable for the young kids, I think is a great idea. Great job with the Milwaukee Bucks and West Bend Mutual, appreciate that.
Anybody else? All right, we'll have this on for decision next week, Monday. Thanks to you, Craig. Jay, thanks to you guys and folks with Boys and Girls Club, and of course, West Bend Mutual. Thanks for being the conduit.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is an ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the City of West Bend for a change of land use for 74-plus acres of lands located at the southeast corner of West Washington Street and County Highway Z from commercial, open space, and two-family residential land uses, to commercial and open space land uses by the City of West Bend Department of Development, and a presentation tonight by business and development specialist James Ranky. And Jim, are you going to run through both of the items at the same time?
Yeah, I'll run through both of the items, since they're both related. Back in September of this year, the Plan Commission held a public hearing for the change of the comprehensive plan. The request has been made on behalf of the department to change the land use out in that area from the commercial to family, open space, and wetland areas, and change that to just commercial and open space. This is to help facilitate for the development of the Fleet Farm parcel out there. The commission held a public hearing, and also passed a resolution approving the land use change. This area is, has a slight change from the, and variation from the agreed-upon area in Area A in the boundary agreement. This was also sent to the township for their review, and we didn't receive any objections or any other comments regarding the change for this. Along with the comprehensive plan change, we're also going to affix the permanent zoning for the property. This property is proposed to be zone B1 Community Business District, along with P1 Park Recreation and Open Space, and also the shoreline wetlands and non-shoreland wetlands area for the environmentals. Again, the commission held a public hearing on that, we received no comments or objections regarding the zoning or the comprehensive plan change. So we're asking the council tonight to approve both the comprehensive plan change, and then also the permanent zoning for the property for the redevelopment.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Entertain a motion, then, on.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 11 is an ordinance to permanently zone approximately 74 acres of land on the southeast corner of County Highway Z and West Washington Street from temporary to B1 Community Business District, P1 Park Recreation and Open Space, and SW non-shoreland-wetland, and SW shoreline-wetland districts.
and SW shoreline-wetland districts by Fleet Farm.
Motion to approve that as well.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Fleet Farm. Thank you once again. Jim, are they done in front of us? They can go get their shovels out?
They are. They have site plan approval, wrapping up some of the other traffic impact analysis and DOT approvals. And we are in the process of approving their erosion control plan so we can break ground in the next, you know, few days or early next week.
Great, guys. Thank you very much. I know lots of folks are looking forward to it. Appreciate it. Item number 12 is a decision regarding claim against the city by Aegis Corporation, John Mustopich.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 13 is a decision regarding claim against the city by Aegis Corporation, Elizabeth Heck Barth.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. We'll entertain motions to go into two closed sessions. The first one is item 14, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute, section 19.85, parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. WEDC Site Assessment Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Christian.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Maddle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And item 15, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute, section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Offer to purchase city-owned land in TIF number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Christian.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Maddle.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We will come back here for a couple other items. And then, just for the council's knowledge and the public, I'll be involved in item number 14. But when it switches over to item 15, Alderman Hugaster will handle the meeting from there, as I have a potential conflict of interest. Good evening. Like to now reconvene back in open session and take action on number 16, action on the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporate Corporation Site Assessment Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And Steve, if you could handle item 17, please.
Item 7, need offer to purchase city-owned land in TIF number 12, tax key 291.1119.132.046. What a presentation by Adam Gitter. Good evening. Good, Adam.
Hello. So, the staff recommendations for, come at the bottom of paragraph, of the bottom paragraph of Addenda A, to adjust in the manner of the closing date, line 70 of Offer to Purchase, could, as opposed to will, be extended three months, as opposed to six months, puts the date at July 2019. If Van Horn Development is able to attain Plan Commission Site Plan Approval and City Council Approval of a Developers Agreement for the construction of the first building, honor before the current date of April 3, 2019, Site Plan is in addition, and City Council Approval of a Developers Agreement is in addition.
So, so the motion would be incorporating the staff recommendation and accepting the offer to purchase based upon that recommendation?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Item 18 is a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
All right. We had a pretty short meeting. First off, we're starting off the director's review for Amy. So, that'll be, get going here for the next month or two. And then the other exciting part is we had a presentation of the library facilities plan for 2019 through 2022. And so, this is the plan that I've been talking about that has been getting put together by a separate committee. Actually, Alderman Chevalier was included on that, too. So, thank him and others for that work. It kind of gives us a timeline with estimated costs for various maintenance things, down to small things like updating the clock tower so that it actually works like a ticking clock, all the way up to repeat, when we need to repave the parking lot and adding security systems as well. So, I'm really excited that we have this in hand. And it'll help us set targets to kind of push money aside little by little so that we can save up for these big-ticket items.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Alderman Jenkins? Item 19, also Alderman Jenkins, report regarding the Plan Commission Meeting.
Sure. Big thing was Fleet Farm, as we approved earlier tonight. We're very excited to see them getting their location on West Washington. And then, we also discussed and approved the 22-unit multifamily housing to reuse the former Barton School Building. So, really exciting to see that historic building getting reused in that way.
Thank you again, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Finally, item 20 is a report by Alderman Chevalier regarding the Tourism Commission Meeting.
Yes. We met on September 13. We had two presentations. One was from MOA for funds we gave them for the Art and Chalk Festival. And then, there's also a presentation by Habitat for Humanity for funds that we gave them for German Fest. Both events did bring in many folks from outside the area, which helped to generate overnight hotel stays. We also discussed sending out a grant application, similar to the grant applications that those two received in the summer. Now, we're sending out one for eligible 501(c)(3) entities for a winter program. And we should have those in, I believe we agreed, in October. So, if anyone's watching, please submit those.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew? And be no further business before the coming council adjourn. Have a great night, everyone.